Pursuant to the open meeting law, any person may make an audio or video recording of this public meeting or may transmit the meeting through any medium. Attendees are therefore advised that such recordings or transmissions are being made whether perceived or unperceived by those present and are deemed knowledgeable and permissible. So, the...
Councilor Peckham?
Yeah.
Councilor Pelletier?
Yeah.
Shannon Lee.
Here. Alright, City Council Committee on Health and Environmental Affairs, Monday, September 27, 2021 at 5:00 PM. City Council Chamber, One Government Center. And our agenda is going to start off with citizens' input. I know we have one here written. Do we have any emails or...
I did not receive any. Just the one written.
So, I will read this off. "To the City Council Members/Subcommittees, I wish to express my concerns about the conditions of the roads within the Fall River Reservation and the connecting fire lanes. All these roads/laneways are in need of repair. The fire lanes/gates are overgrown, and I don't believe the gates are wide enough to allow fire apparatus to enter without complications and safety concerns for firefighters and water department employees. As to the roadways, Blossom, Wilson, Bell Rock, Indian Town, Yellow Hill, and Coppica, they are dangerous to cars/trucks/vehicles, bikers, and pedestrians alike. The potholes are between 10 to 12 and 1/2 inches deep, which make passing along the roadways very, very dangerous. If ever there is a fire in the reservation passage over the roads, it would become a life-threatening situation for all firefighters, police, ambulance, and others." The population around our water supply numbers, about 146 houses or about 300 possible voters plus vehicles and wildlife. The reservation has many pine trees throughout, and when pine burns, it becomes very smoky, breathtaking, dangerous, and sooty, to say the least. The remains of burning trees could cause a water pollution problem. With the roadways in such condition, how would any apparatus or person get to a major fire or emergency? I've asked Mr. John Perry to respond to meeting with me, to no avail as of yet. While I understand that streets in our city proper require much work, I would ask you to think about the people who live around the reservation and their safety, and about one of the most important commodities are drinking water and water supply and the protection thereof. Yours truly, Watupu Water Board Commissioner, Robert Pearson." Thank you. He said thank you, by the way. So, you know, with that, we were okay with Mr. Pearson giving us a citizen's input and only a citizen's input and no other way contributing to the meeting as to abide by open meeting laws. So, just to give everyone that. Any other citizens' input? None? None? Okay. So, the next, on the next part of the agenda, we'll be accepting the minutes?
Motion made.
Second.
Motion was made, seconded by Councilor Peckham. All is a favor.
Aye.
Alright. So now we'll go into the next resolution, the next item on the agenda. The resolution for yard waste and recycling being collected and disposed of in the same collection vehicle. I believe we have Mr. John Perry coming down. Do we have any other representatives? Is Representative Vezie coming down at all?
I haven't seen them yet, councilor, but I can surely give you a brief overview of what happens when that particular piece takes place.
Did you have a conversation with them that they were actually coming or no?
I had spoken to the foreman, and at that point, it was, he was trying to decide, they were trying to decide whether Mr. Marolla, who's the owner of the company, or if Carlos Scudo, who's the foreman of the trucks, were going to attend. I'm not sure where that went.
Just for the purposes of the record, just to let people understand why we have this resolution, this was a little while ago, but I received the video and it was actually posted on social media as well of yard waste and recycling being sort of mixed into the same bin and purposefully at that time being done. And so, there was a lot of concerns as to environmental concerns, contamination concerns, but also, one of the biggest concerns I had was how, because of how expensive everything is. Our recycling is very expensive, our yard waste can be expensive. So I wanted to understand what the ramifications were as far as cost on the taxpayer for that as well. I know that Councilor Peckham at the time did have some questions as well. So, what I'll do is have you, you know, sort of give a summary of the situation and then questions.
Yeah, sure. I mean, it's an unfortunate situation. Nothing in those, no waste stream should be mixed and commingled together. So it is unfortunate. It has happened in the past, even when we as a city would collect it, our employees. At any given day, you may have 10 to 12 trucks on the road, and you have one foreman watching them. So you can't have your eyes on everybody at all times. And it's unfortunate, sometimes employees take the liberty to mix that, whether it's they're looking to shave some time off the end of their day, or they just, you know, feel that it'd be easier for them. Once we're made aware that this has happened, I saw, I saw the video that was circulated. It isn't just that particular video, it has happened in other instances. As soon as I'm made aware of it, I contact the foreman first and then the owner of the company. Easy disposal. And I make them aware that this is happening, that it cannot happen, it's not allowed to happen. And on their end, I have to give them credit. They have been quite active when it comes to making sure that on their side, there are repercussions for the employees that do it. I can assure you that two employees have been terminated by the company for multiple offenses of this, and another one was suspended. So, they, there are consequences when this happens. It isn't something we look light upon. And, you know, as far as the contamination piece, when you put anything other than recycling in the recycling waste stream, that upsets your contamination percentages. So, as you've heard me say many times on this floor, you know, we need to get a handle on our contamination rate so that we can barter a better deal for a better price for recycling. Now, we have gotten ourselves into a better deal. It's a one-year deal right now.
ABC.
Yeah. And, you know, I've gotten some feedback from them where the recycling is getting cleaner. We put a huge push on the public education. Our litter enforcement group is out every night that there's an event, if we have a movie in the park or a movie at the school, if there's, you know, the feasts are kind of still spotty, but I'd like to get tables at those. We have a booth, we set up a tent, a table, educational material for the residents. We sent out a mass mailer, and we're also having programs within the schools to try to get the, you know, the knowledge and info out there that people need to have. So, contamination is big for us. We want to see that go down. But I will tell you, the contract that we're in right now for recycling disposal is not a contamination escalator built into it. So in essence, if our contamination rates are 30% or if they're 60%, they're not adjusting our price. We get a flat rate. And I would be much more concerned if there was an escalator. So things like that would be driving up the cost even more than what it would have been originally. That doesn't mean that it isn't something we're worried about. It is a waste ban item, so you're not supposed to have yard waste going into landfills. So you need to make sure that you're cognizant of that. But unless it's an egregious circumstance, so a truck pulls up at the transfer station at Republic or any other one for that matter, and, you know, half of the truck is yard waste and half is recycling, that will stand out. If there's a little bit of yard waste mixed in with the recycling, it's unfortunate, but that wouldn't trigger any kind of penalty from DEP or anything.
Okay, great. Councilor Peckham?
Just answering my question. And I will say, since this resolution was filed, I have had to make a couple of calls.
Sure.
Unrelated in regards to this company, and the matters were taken care of very quickly.
Yep.
So I can say that, I'm sure that they did address this. They unfortunately unable to be here tonight, but my questions have been answered by yourself, the ones that I would have for now.
Excellent.
So I yield, thank you.
Excellent. Councilor Pelletier?
If we lose a load, we get fined?
If we lose a load?
Yeah, the whole truck.
Oh, well, that hasn't happened, and I pray to God it doesn't happen, but at the end of the day, it would be dependent upon DEP. I think DEP, you know, we work well with them, and, you know, they know that we're trying to do the right things. Kathy Merzer is my DEP representative that I deal with when it comes to our collections and our recycling program and things like that. She knows we're working extremely hard. So I think if it was a one-off, where it was an aberration, you know, one truck came in, something got mixed up, they didn't realize there was half a load of yard waste on the truck, and then they started collecting recycling. Something like that, I think, would trigger a conversation. If it kept being repeated, then I'd say, yeah, that would trigger something where DEP would take action. They're pretty good about that.
So if you got a load with somehow a bunch of rotten fish in it, they wouldn't, they'd go after you, right?
Yeah, no, I think the facility that we dump it at would first be the ones that would want to really talk to us. DEP, their process is this, if a violation occurs or they get a call that something is going on or something is wrong, they will come out and do an assessment. So, they'll come out, they'll take a look at our loads, our recycling, see what's in it, what we're doing, how we're doing it. And if they see violations, they're more of a, an organization that wants to work with you. They're not punitive. They don't want to fine and violate people. They will work with you to get you to where you need to be before they fine. They look at things as though that fine is the last-case resort. They don't want to initially just fine, but then, you know, to be honest, if the community or the company dealing with DEP doesn't show that they're being responsive, that they're taking steps and actions to correct the issue, then DEP would definitely come down on them heavy. But we're not, that's not this community, that's not Forover. If we are notified that there's an issue, we work very hard to take care of it because we all understand the financial impacts of not. So, that's something. And then one other thing, if you don't mind, I just want to point out, it's a common misnomer or misconception that we have control of the employees for the private company. So, I manage the waste collection contract with EZ, so in essence, I have the contract, I know what the stipulations are in it, and it's my job to work with them to make sure everything that's supposed to be happening is happening. But on a day-to-day basis, operations-wise, it's EZ's responsibility to deal with their employees. So if an employee on the street was to do something wrong and we're notified, I would notify the company, and that is their responsibility to address it with that employee. I don't have that right to address it with the employee. I do, however, have the right to follow up and make sure that it was addressed. So it's just a misconception sometimes. People call and they think we can actually go to the truck and say, "You can't do this." That's up to EZ. If we see that the problem isn't being corrected, as you've said, councilor, they normally are, very quickly.
Well, I'll go on record and state, if you don't mind, I did have an issue in the street Super Carlos. He showed up himself the following week to make sure the issue I was having didn't happen again and was rectified. So he was, he was very...
Yeah, they're very responsive.
Yeah, it was definitely expedient, I can tell you that.
Yeah, is everything perfect? No. Would we like it to be? Sure. Is that a realistic expectation? I don't think so. We're doing the best we can though, that's for sure.
Councilor Pelletier, yourself, floor.
Sorry, councilor.
No, you're great.
Was it you?
C6.
Truck number six comes in.
Okay.
Any truck number six comes in. He's got a bad load. It's a bad load. So, they decide to fine somebody. Is the city's fine or is it EZ?
It would fall on the city.
It would fall on the city?
It would fall on the city. But also, if you're transporting a waste ban item and dumping it off, they look at it as a whole. So they're going to say it's the city's responsibility to make sure this stuff doesn't end up at the end-user facility, but who brought it to us? So we would all be grouped in, and then, as I said, DEP would come in, do an assessment and an investigation to see who is the responsible party, and it would go that way.
So how many stops of number six trucks have it one day?
You know, I'd say in any given day, you have 32,000 parcels in the city, somewhere about that. So you're about 7,000, 8,000 per day.
One truck?
Stops. No, 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 no.
Just at number six. He's got his route, right?
Yeah, he's got his route. I'd say anywhere 1,500, 2,000 stops a day.
So could you pin it back to whoever?
You pretty much know where the trucks are working. You know, the foreman would know which trucks he had in each area. So sometimes it gets a little sketchy because sometimes you do send other trucks into an area to help. So, you know, councilor in seat one is working in an area and you're falling behind, and councilor in seat six has to come over and help you. So now you've had two trucks in that area, so that gets a little sketchy when you're trying to figure out and identify which truck it was, but for the most part, we generally know where they are.
Alright, I guess the question you're alluding is how much? That's what I want to know.
Yeah, so unless there was some sort of fine levied against us, that would obviously be monetary. How much would it cost us?
Yeah.
Is that your point? So, again, you know, when you get back to the contract we're currently in, it wouldn't be an up charge. You know, ABC disposals, where we bring our material now at this point, recycling, there's no escalator clause in that contract. So, they would call us or they would send me an email and say, "Hey, you know, you had a real dirty load, a real bad load." As I've said, they've given us props for the fact that we're getting it cleaner, but they've also held me accountable when they do get some tough loads, which does happen. So they would send me an email saying, "Hey, you know, Forover had two bad loads today. Let's continue to work and try to get them clean. Overall though, your material is getting much better." So that would be the way it would work. When we were with Casella, Casella Recycling was who we were with prior to the last contract with Waste Stream. Casella's contract always had escalators in it. So depending on your percentage, they would give you a threshold. 7% contamination, you wouldn't get any kind of fee charged to you. Anything over that, you would start to build charges. And you'd get to, let's say, the 10% threshold, it's one fee. If you reached 20, it was an even bigger fee. Once you got past 25%, it was an overall charge per ton of $225, I believe, 220 or $225 a ton for the entire load, once you got to that 25% contamination. So with those escalators like that built in, then it would cost us money. At this point right now, luckily for us, it isn't.
Have we ever been fined with EZ, what is up with the car?
No.
No, no, no?
No, sir.
So we're in fairly good shape?
We're working it, yeah. You know, collection-wise, there are issues that pop up, as Councilor Peckham said, but they were addressed right away, you know, and things have kind of subsided as far as the angst with a new company coming in. This is year six now, so we're working toward the back end of the contract. Again, is it perfect? No. But is anything really perfect? I think we all attain, try to attain that, but I'm not sure it's realistic.
Well, just to say that my wife come a long way. I'm on her all the time. She puts it in the ruin bin, I tell her.
Yes.
That's it.
That's it.
I got one there for the cans. She don't open the cans, she don't cook. So I open the cans. So I give it on the shelf, she throw it in the other one. I tell her right away. Perry is going to be mad at you. Let's do this thing right. Like everybody in Forover, she was doing it right.
That's right, absolutely.
So if you got to watch the wife or the husband, that's what you got to do. You save money.
Yeah, so, and if I don't, are you all set, councilor?
I don't know. I'll probably be in trouble tonight. I hope...
Well, I didn't, you put me in a precarious predicament, because if I say, you know, she's the one who's really policing it, you're going to be mad at me the next council meeting. And if I say it's her, she's going to be mad at me when I see her in the morning.
Right.
No, but in all seriousness, if you go to the city's website, any resident goes to the city's website, look up Department of Community Maintenance, Sanitation Division, go into the recycling end of that, and you're going to see links to Recycle Smart, and you're going to see the information, informational package you could pick up here at City Hall online that you can, you can look over and print out. Recycle Smart is really, basically an encyclopedia for recycling. So any question any resident or any person would have about recycling can be found on that website. It's a link directly to Mass DEP, that's their, part of their program. And you can see exactly what is recyclable, what isn't recyclable. So if anybody ever has a question, you can, you can lead them to that link, recycle smart.org, and that will give them the answer to any recycle question they may have. Okay?
Yep. Councilor Pelletier?
Oh, I'm all set.
Alright, thank you.
Are you?
Thank you. Regarding some of the things you talked about, just to echo Councilor, Councilor Peckham's point on EZ, they've been a very good service over the past six years in the city. I can attest to that myself as well. And the details that you provided about who is in charge of who and who contacts, that's based on the fact that that's basically a private contract.
Correct.
Between the city, it's one of those public-private partnerships that they made. So the authority, the authority, the authority of that company is the person who handles the operations, not yourself, exactly.
That is correct.
You relay the information. If there's a complaint that comes to your office, you relay that information to EZ and then they take care of it.
That is correct.
That's right. Now, with the contract that we have with ABC, what was it per ton?
85.
So our recycling right now is $85 per ton.
$85 a ton, yes, sir.
What was it with Casella on average?
Well, Casella, Casella, if you're going to, so now you're going to skip back through Waste Stream back to Casella. With the contamination rates that we consistently had, we were in the 170 range, and then when the load was completely contaminated, like I said, that 25% threshold, it was $225 a ton.
So...
And then we went to Waste Stream with no escalator at 135, but then we had the opportunity to bring that down to 85. Now the market's turning around, which is why I wanted to see a one-year deal with two one-year extensions if we choose to. And ABC's been a good partner. They've worked with us. They knew they were getting recycling that had a significant contamination, but they were willing to work with us on that. So we'll see where we're at at the end of this first year, and if the market continues to trend the way it is, I think we might even be able to build on that. But we need to continue to get our contamination numbers down. We really need, that's the biggest piece for us. You know, DEP just issued some more further waste ban items. So that's basically when you see a waste ban item or added waste ban items going on from DEP, it's because these landfills that are left are filling up. They're filling up quick. So they're trying to keep these items out of those landfills. Recycling obviously is a little different, but, I mean, we're running out of room. So we need to have clean recycling so we can send it somewhere that it can be processed and we can continue to clean.
How much is our yard waste per ton?
Yard waste per ton? Okay. We pay a flat rate. We go to two different facilities. We go to Site Ready Materials in Tivon.
Yep.
Yep, and then we go to Little Wolf Inc., which is a small farm-style setup in Dartmouth. Little Wolf, I believe it's 170 a load, and Site Ready, I don't, I don't want to, I'd say maybe somewhere in the range of 30 to 38 a ton, something like that.
Okay. Oh, so one is per load and the other one's per ton?
Yeah, one's per load and one's per ton.
If I remember correctly, I think you told me one time that Site Ready was per load and it was like 125.
Yeah, so I'll confirm that, but yeah, it's in, it's in that range. Yeah. So, you know, Little Wolf's a little further off, but it's more convenient on the Tuesday runs because the north end of the city kind of abuts Westport, Dartmouth, and that area. So they can come by the back way and they can get there a little bit quicker, which makes them a little bit more efficient. So by far, Site Ready gets more loads, because on a daily basis, it's quicker to get there, but Little Wolf will get some.
And just, just for the purposes of cost, that method with our yard waste is a lower cost than if we were to try to renegotiate the same way we did with ABC?
Yeah, I mean, it's pretty standard. Those rates are pretty standard, and yard waste, yard waste is generally clean. We do, you know, Little Wolf gets a little bit of some contamination. Site Ready, we hear it as well. So what'll happen is as the yard waste comes in, if there's any trash or debris mixed into it, you know, we've had people put yard waste in the bucket, in the car, mix some fence wood in, and then throw more yard waste over the top. So now that fence wood isn't recyclable as yard waste. So once it's dumped out, it comes out. They'll sort it, they'll separate that trash, they'll put it into the small dumpster, then we'll come and we'll pick that up.
And solid waste is still around 65?
Yes.
A ton? And that's through Republic, correct?
Correct.
Okay. And the main consequence of contamination when it comes to that ABC contract is we're trying to make sure when we renegotiate, we can continue to keep it at 85 or lower.
That is correct.
So if we come in with a lot of contamination in our recycling, then they can come to the table and say, "Hey, we want to kick this up to 100, 120."
That is correct. They could do that, and that's the point. I continue to stress it. I continue to say it. I'll say it at nauseam. If we can get our contamination rates under control, then we can barter a better deal with an end-user facility, you know, better than $85, and possibly at some point, maybe even break even. And that is, that is the key. Whereas municipality, we're not here to make money, we're here to break even. So if we can cover our costs, then that's the best we're really looking to do. So if we can get rid of recycling at no cost to the city or at a minute cost, that's, that's the key.
You have, you have done a great job of giving us this information at meetings, and you're doing, and I appreciate the steps that you're taking at the schools, and I've seen, I got the mail myself. I kept the mail, just, you know, just so you know. But one of the, one of the suggestions that I know I've made and maybe some others have made as well as, you know, WSAR, newspaper, social media, taking that extra step in, you know, I've seen department heads from here or in the past go on WSAR and do full-hour interviews sometimes to let people know what's going on. Even your predecessor, well, predecessor, predecessor, yeah, back then. I remember he even had his own show for a little while talking about the different recycling things. So, you know, I encourage that as well. I think the more information we can get out there, the better it can lower the cost on the taxpayer.
Yeah, I'd be, I'd be glad to do that. And I mean, we could also expand that to some, just some local radio spots, you know, some ads just to get the word out there. And then if WSAR was gracious enough to offer me the opportunity, I'd be glad to do that.
Yeah, that'd be great. Any other questions? Okay, so this was just a discussion, so appreciate you coming down.
Appreciate it. Thank you, councillors. Good night, good luck tonight when you get home. I'll respect your dinner to be home.
I'm not going home.
Alright, so the next, the next item on the agenda is our resolution from September 14, 2021, discussing concerns regarding water quality. And I believe Mr. Ferlin and some others are going to come down to the table here. Everyone can introduce themselves as they make it to the table.
Good evening, Councilor Paul Ferlin, Administrator of Community Utilities.
I'm Jim Terrell, President of the Watupu Water Board.
My name's Mike LaBosse. I'm the Forester and Project Manager for the Watupu Reservation.
Thank you very much. So just starting off the conversation, I was given a look around on the reservation, given some concerns, and as I put this resolution together, some other people... some other people, some residents did give me calls with ve- very similar concerns regarding, uh, the road quality, uh, being an issue for public safety purposes, and then, you know, on top of that, um, just water quality concerns. Um, it wasn't in this, um, in the citizen's input, however, I was, uh, when I was walking through the woods too, there was concerns, and I think you had, you, you, you can give me some input on, as far as like dead wood, uh, trees that are getting knocked over, how that impacts the water, how that impacts water quality as well. Um, so I know you brought your map. It's not a, it's not a, it's not a, a meeting with Mr. Ferlin if he doesn't have his map with him, so, uh, and that's, and I mean it in a good way, by the way. Um, but yeah, we, you can have this, this, uh, meeting here and, and you can give us, uh, the, the information. But mainly, what we'd really like to just try to make sure that we're talking about is if there were a fire incident, if there were, uh, some type of public safety incident regarding that situation, how that would affect our water quality. I think that's one of the main, main triggers of this meeting, um, this, this resolution. So out, outside of that, you know, it's, it's your flaw.
Alright, excellent, thank you very much, uh, for having us here tonight, Counselors. Uh, first thing I wanna start off by saying, um, you know, is that, uh, the city of Fall River's water quality is very good. Our finished water that's sent out to the, uh, drinking water customers, uh, is of the excellent, excellent quality. Um, tibid, tibidity is extremely low. Um, you know, all of our sampling, um, we haven't had a violation in about over five years. Uh, the last violation that we did have, uh, was in relation to trihalomethanes. It was a violation when they changed regulations to, uh, from, uh, averaging the whole entire city, all the sampling sites on a yearly basis, to averaging the individual sample sites, uh, which is sixteen of them around the city, uh, on a yearly basis. Since then, we've updated some of our water quality measures that we do throughout the system. Uh, and, uh, we currently have, as I said, haven't had a violation in over five years, uh, with DEP. Uh, all of, uh, the drinking water that's sent out to our customers, uh, complies with, uh, uh, three twelve CMR twenty-two, which is, uh, the Massachusetts State Drinking Water Standards, uh, and that's what, uh, that's what we, uh, go by. Uh, every year, as per regulations, we put out a consumer confidence report, uh, make it available to all of our customers. And, uh, feel free to give, uh, each one of the Counselors in one for the record. Um, these go out on an annual basis, uh, it is required by law. Um, but, uh, this goes over, uh, some things going on within the, uh, within the water department currently. Some future things that we have going on, as well as, uh, in the back you'll see a, uh, uh, a list of all of the, uh, water quality standards that we test for in the results. Um, there is testing that's done throughout the city, uh, every week for total chloroform. Uh, and, uh, knock on wood, we've been good with that. Uh, total chlorine done throughout the city on a weekly basis. Uh, on a monthly basis, uh, we do other things, uh, other types of sampling throughout the whole entire city. Um, so, uh, THMs, trihalomethanes, uh, is done on a quarterly basis. Uh, TCs ninety-six per month. Um, lead is done every three years. So we ta- we sample, uh, drinking water sites, uh, houses that have a known lead service. Uh, we test those, um, every three years. We're now up to every three years. We started out, we were monthly, then once we got into good standards, we, we were yearly. Uh, and now we're on to an every-three-year rotation, uh, which those have come back. We test, I believe it's about sixty sites throughout the city plus two schools, uh, for lead. Uh, and then there's a, uh, uh, variance of other things that we have to do once a year. Nitrate, nitro- nitrite, sodium, um, PFOS and a list of other, uh, other water quality, um, standards that need to be met. So, uh, all of our sampling does come, uh, does come back very well for all of our finished water. So I don't want anybody out there to think that, uh, we have an issue, uh, with our drinking water that we're sending out to our, out to our residents, so. Um, you know, one of the things I, I know that, uh, you know, that you mentioned, that you brought up was, uh, the forest in the watershed, um, and that leads directly into the drinking water supply. A lot of people don't understand that over fifty percent of Fall River is either water or forest. Uh, everybody thinks that Fall River is the city, the side that we're sitting on with all the houses and all the big buildings and the streets and everything like that. Fifty percent of area of Fall River by land area is either water or forested land. Um, you know, and that's a great benefit that we have. Uh, started, you know, probably a hundred and fifty years ago, uh, with the forethoughts of our forefathers, uh, between the Watuppa Reservoir Corporation, along with the large mill owners within the city, to protect the water rights and protect a clean, pristine drinking water supply within the city of Fall River. Uh, so that was one thing, um, that they did that we're very lucky to have. Um, you think back about, uh, you know, uh, last year was a, uh, was a very interesting year throughout the state, uh, in this area of the country to begin with. Um, there was a drought in most of the area of the state. Uh, city of Fall River, we started off, uh, last year, our, uh, North Watuppa Pond was about thirty inches above full pond at the beginning of the summer. Uh, throughout the year, we dropped to about thirty below full pond. Uh, that's not a range that scares us, uh, with being able to supply drinking water to our residents. Uh, other areas throughout the state, um, Western Mass, even right across the river in Somerset. Uh, last summer, their drinking water supply was very, very low. Uh, there was, uh, there was spr- you know, regulations on how much water people could use, when they could use it, and things like that. We were lucky enough that we didn't have, uh, we didn't have any of those issues. Uh, since then, our reservoir has rebounded. Um, we've used our secondary water supply, Copacoot, to be able to, uh, to be able to assist with the North Watuppa coming back in. Um, tonight, again, uh, you know, Jim Terryell, the President of our Water Board is here. Uh, he is a forty-year-plus veteran, uh, he worked for the water department for many years. Uh, he was, uh, instrumental when the water department, uh, in the city created the Bio Reserve. Uh, so he's extremely familiar with that, uh, with the whole entire area. Uh, Mike LaBosia, who's our forester, manages and maintains, uh, that area, uh, of, of the reservation over on the other side of the North Watuppa. Um, and Mike is a, uh, is, is a forester by training, uh, as well as, uh, being our local forester, he's been, he's been in the field for, uh, decades. So, uh, if you want, I'll turn it over to Jim so we can talk a little bit about, uh.
Yeah, um, when you mention the danger of fire, that's something that's always on our mind. Uh, a dry fall, a dry march with high winds, those are things that really concern us greatly. And it's something that we keep in mind. As far as the width of the fire lanes, um, I believe the fire lanes were constructed by the CCC Corps in the thirties. I have seen rather large equipment, quite large equipment, easily go through the gates. Most especially the gates along Blossom Road, um, around Yellow Hill Road and off Indian Town. We have a very good relationship with the state forest, who do have a forestry fire department. Um, we had a small fire a couple of years ago and we were able to put it out very quickly. It occurred in a great spot to put out a small fire and it went out pretty quickly. I think, I think the concern seems to originate from dead and down trees. Dead and down trees, there's actually a, a term for this called morticulture, which is, um, from death come life, and prior to the seventies, forest management was all about clearing it out, taking out the understory completely. Clearing streams and brooks. National Science Foundation in twenty fifteen published a paper, and I brought a copy of it with me. It's, it's called Forest of Living Dead. Trees that fall down and decay naturally release their carbon in a very slow method. It is far better to release carbon that way, it causes less problems with the environment. These trees and their tending branches and limbs and everything else are homes to micro, uh, small animals, birds and everything. To drag logs out requires log skidding. Log skidding is probably one of the most detrimental things you can do in a watershed. Because if you've ever seen log skitters, they're rather large backhoes with chains on all four wheels. And they need that for traction. There are trails still up in the watershed left over from skidding fifty, seventy-five years ago. And it's not a practice that we feel is beneficial. We would end up with more runoff, we would end up with more siltation in the, in the feeder streams. And it's just not a forestry management program that we feel or is felt by, like I say, the National Science Foundation, University of Pennsylvania Forestry Management School. Um, we do have a woodcutting program in which residents can come up with Mike, get a woodcutting permit, we put them in an area and they can cut dead and down trees. And those are usually up on the upland side of Blossom, it's not on the pond side. We, we refer to Blossom Road as the dividing line. East of Bloss- uh, west of Blossom Road is very sensitive. Your main feeder streams, which are like the arteries in your body, um, that's where Blossom Brook, King Philip Brook, those are the main feeds along with springs in the North Watuppa. As Paul said, we are blessed, we are truly blessed with the amount of water that we have. Very few places on earth, literally on earth, have the water supply that the city of Fall River enjoys. Add to that, we own the rights to Saudi, DePaul, Stafford, Bleacheries, South Watuppa, Nokachoke, Terry Brook, all of that belongs to us. That is an incredible asset, incredible. It's also an asset that we take very seriously. I've spent the majority of my adult life either as water registrar, or as director, clerk to the Water Board, and now on the Water Board, and I do it because the water department is, it's my stick. It's, it's something that has grown in me throughout all my years. And I take the job very seriously, and that's why when I heard a question about water quality, I immediately went to Director Ferlin and said, you know, what is it, what is this?
Yeah, well, just to be clear, there was no accusation of poor water quality in my resolution.
Um, no, sir, there was some discussion about that though.
Yeah, and I wanted to make sure that we, if, i- in the event of any kind of, you know, uh, fire problem or anything like that, that we, what, what would, how would our response be? Our road quality being one of the biggest concerns of getting apparatuses out to that location, if there is one. You said the last fire that was there fortunately was in a favorable section, that's not always, that couldn't, that might not always be the case, and.
That's very true.
And we always, and, and I think that Mr., you know, um, Counsel Peckham, who, who, you know, really pushes public safety, would say that we always wanna be prepared for the worst, you know?
We've talked in the department for years, um, going back easily forty years in my memory. Um, we've talked about the deterioration of Yellow Hill and Blossom Roads. They're at the point now where there is no stopgap measure, in my opinion. I believe that would be the opinion of a, an engineer as well. They would require total reconstruction. That's a very expensive proposition. Um, as far as filling in holes, everything has been tried. Um, unfortunately, we have a constant battle with off-road vehicles. We have a constant battle with dirt bikes, they literally rip the ground right up. Um, it would be, it's kind of a two-edged sword. If you, if you were to, to reconstruct the roads out there, the dumping would accelerate. It's, it's always been, um, sort of as I say, a two-edged sword. It, it's also been batted around, you know, in, in my era, I proposed closing the roads. That went over like a bomb, but it was a way to stop the rampant dumping of tires, petrochemicals, paint, and, and it, it was, it was killing us. Um, the easier way into the Bio Reserve, and it's great, is come in Indian Town Road, Indian Town to the reservation on Blossom Road is a beautiful piece of roadway. Uh, we freely admit Wilson, Blossom and Yellow Hill up to the fire tower are in deplorable condition. But that would be up to the Department of Public Works and Community Maintenance.
Agreed, and, and I think first we talk about it, you know, we, we were only talking about the environmental impact of, if there was a fire, what would be the environmental impact on the water? This is a multifaceted conversation, and that's the reason why, uh, I made another resolution in that same vein to public safety, to address that part that you're talking about, and it could've went to Public Works as well, uh, and maybe it will. Maybe, maybe it leads to a Public Works resolution to where we now can start to figure out what the plan is and the finance, you know, for that. Um, maybe, but I think this, this, this board, uh, this, this, um, subcommittee is concerned about the environmental impact. So, I, and I appreciate, um, I actually wrote down a lot of the things you were talking about, the forest of living dead. And so it's, it's more beneficial to allow the, um, the wood and, and the fallen trees to decay rather than to pull them out. I think that you made your, your case on that. Um, and, and it's, I don't think that the dead wood itself would affect water quality. But however, if, if it's more susceptible to a fire or not, I mean, I think that's the thing that, that's worth knowing. And if there were, again, if there was a fire issue, what would happen to the quality of water if it was something that the public safety would have a hard time getting to? I think that's ultimately what we're trying to get to on this.
And it, it's a difficult question to answer. Um, it would depend first and foremost on the location of the fire. Secondly, it would depend on exactly what type of a fire you had. Do you have a smoldering fire or do you have a fast mover? Um, the water in the North Watuppa is taken through the intake manifold and then into the treatment plant and treated. So were the worst possible situation, a plume of ash, something along those lines. The plant would be more than capable of filtering the drinking water.
Okay.
And then the ash layer would percolate back down through the water column and end up on the bottom of the pond now. You know, short of a volcanic situation, a pyroclastic type of thing. Um, I think, I think that would probably be the way the worst-case scenario would go.
Okay.
Now, prevailing wind is south and west, um, that would keep it away from the north pond, more towards the uplands, um, or over towards Copacoot.
Okay.
Uh, Copacoot, and just by letting you know, Copacoot is, is, Director Ferlin said, Copacoot is, is, we always used to call it our backup reservoir, but it's actually an integral part of our safe daily yield. Um, the water from Copacoot is pumped through a pipeline, goes along, uh, a section of Indian Town Road. It goes up through the woods and then it comes back down through the King Philip Swamp. And the reason it was done that way is the King Philip Swamp acts as a natural percolation bed. The water flows in there, it settles through the swamp, and then it runs out Blossom and Lightning Bro- uh, uh, King Philip Brooks. And in the old days, going way back, they used to throw fifty, fifty-pound bags of lime in the brooks. And, and use that to, uh, control the pH. Today, it's a little more modern, and that's done at the treatment plant. But the idea of Copacoot, um, you can do things over in Copacoot. When we did the Bio Reserve, we allowed shoreline fishing, that's strictly forbidden on the North Watuppa. Because Copacoot, there is a, a stage Copacoot water goes through, and it's a natural filtering. We're really very fortunate. We, uh, you, you, you look around at other communities and you look around at the western part of this country.
Alright.
And.
It's nightmare.
Oh my god.
Right, and that's, I mean, I think that's another. Right, and that's, I mean, I think that's another, like, you know, kind of larger scale concern is when, if things like that were ever to happen in this area, it would be nightmarish. But fortunately, we have a lot of, a lot of natural infrastructure in place to sort of avoid those things. Council Peckham.
Oh, I'm sorry. The question I had was, and because it is multifaceted and a section of this was sent to my committee, Public Safety. How do you, how would you describe the fire lanes now, passable?
Yeah, I'd love to, I'd love to answer that. So it really should be a comfort to people that we have, we have very good equipment to, to maintain fire lanes. A lot of the fire lanes that were built by the CCC are actually more than fire lanes, they're fire breaks. So a fire lane might be, might be, you know, ten feet would be adequate to get a machine. Fire breaks are typically thirty feet wide, so that allows for a machine to pass another machine. It allows for, if it's a ground fire, to be able to actually, you know, form a defense along that wide area. And there have been fires over, in the last ten years and there, you know, there are some questions that kind of address that. A ground fire is, is, is a fire that can be, you know, can be somewhat easily controlled if you can get access to it. Of course, the better the condition of the roads, the better the access. There's over twenty miles of roads out there, not even counting fire lanes. But fire lanes, I heard a couple of comments earlier in the meeting about fire gates, for example. We don't put any gates that, that won't fit fire apparatus, right? The gates are generally fourteen feet, maybe sixteen feet, so that's, that's, that's a known thing. We main, we, the fire lanes, you know, we have, we have mowing apparatus to mow the lanes itself. We have sidearm flail mowers to, to mow the shoulders. And we generally get into that via, you know, the wider mowing in the fall. We're generally doing sort of like the lawn mowing in the, in the growing season. Another thing to put some confidence in is we have a fire tower out on the top of Copacoot Hill. That's, Copacoot Hill is the highest point in Southern Bristol County. So we have a fire tower on top of that. It's, it's staffed by DCR all summer during the growing season, open as early as April. And they, they sort of staff it depending on the weather. And in, in the past, when we have had a fire, they're generally the first to spot it. You know, they'll get a call, whatever, there's a live body up there, they still do things the old fashioned way, they bring down a map. They, they triangulate it with other fire towers in Bourne and in Cushinget and in somewhere like Dyton or Rainham or somewhere out there. So they get great coverage, so, I'm sorry.
Just, just asking, just off, just off of what you've been saying, do they have, they have helicopters that can also kind of address an issue that was, be hard to find, correct?
Yes, yeah, they, I mean, depending on.
The severity of the situation.
Yeah, they'll, they'll step up depending on, on what they need. I mean, they'll use, for example, coordinating with other agencies if there's a missing person or something like that. They have access to some assets like that. But generally, they start from, you know, they start for the scale that's appropriate. The other thing about DCR is their fire headquarters is right in the Free Town State Forest. So the fires that have happened over the, over the years, and they haven't been big fires, they've been small fires, but they're the first to arrive. They'll get there well before Fall River because they know the area. They have apparatus that can actually traverse some of those more difficult roads. And they have apparatus that's specific to fire, forest fires. You know, they'll have, they'll have brush breakers, they'll have the ability to bring out, you know, hundreds and hundreds of feet of line. They can draft right out of one of our ponds to bring the water out there. So they're, 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 you know, they're like the MacGyver, you know, group. They can really handle, because, you know, the Free Town Forest has been there since the nineteen thirties, so they're well equipped. And that's, and, and, you know, DCR has a whole division that deals with that across the state. So like, they're, they're in our backyard, so. But as far as the fire lanes go, yeah, these, these fire lanes are in many cases better than the public roads out there, I'll be honest with you. They were built by the CCC. The CCC had resources and really not a lot of mechanical resources, they had a lot of human resources. They crushed stone, they, they made deep gravel beds in those, in the, you know, on the fire lanes. They built fire ponds, there are fire suppression ponds out there that have water in them all season long. They built really good structures over streams so that we don't have any problems with, you know, if, if there was a fire to be fought. You don't have machines going through streams, creating erosion and, you know, compounding that. But the best, the best, you know, the best thing we can do in terms of protection from forest fire is advance of the fire. You know, make sure our roads are as good as they can be, maybe even work with, you know, and, and, you know, I've had these discussions with the fire department. Work with them to help train, understand what the routes are to get out there, understand the best, you know, routes to, to, and to coordinate. Actually, DCR does that very well as, as well. They'll set, they'll set up a command post out there and they'll coordinate with the mutual response. Often Dartmouth is out there, Westport is out there, Fall River, Free Town, so, but I'm going on and on, but.
Yeah, no, and I.
Fire lane question was the one.
Yeah, and I ask it because again, they all, they intertwine. And I had asked the question in case there was any research or something I had to do before the public safety meeting that we will have to address public safety. But not to go any further into the public safety aspect of it, I apologize. But I appreciate your answer and it's great to hear that the fire lanes are clear. I haven't been out there in a while, but you guys do a great job and I appreciate it. Thank you, with that, I yield.
Thank you, just a couple of things on what Mike said. You've got to remember a fire lane too, you're not going to take the same type of fire apparatus that you use within the city out into a fire lane to, to fight a fire. You know, from an urban fire and the equipment that's used within the city, it's very different to, to battle a fire in a wooded area. I think of one that we had just a couple of years ago over behind Timber Lane, took a couple of acres. DCR was first responders onto the site, Fall River, some implemented as well as Dartmouth, fire department was out there as well. And it ended up where DCR had to bring in very large doses and special plow blades to be able to dig up all the roots under the ground. To be able to actually put that, that fire out. So that's not something that, you know, the city that we're going to have the access to. And again, that's why Mike, Mike mentioned our partners out there. DCR is a great asset to be able to have them, have their equipment so close and have them with such a good, such a good thing. Another thing that DCR does out in the whole entire area is what they call prescriptive burns. So every year they go out there and they, they map out certain areas where they want to go out and they want to burn off some of the undercover. So to eat up some of that fuel that may be sitting on the ground. So that's something that DCR does in a prescriptive manner throughout their properties and some of us and stuff like that. So sometimes they notify us, they notify all emergency personnel in the area that they are doing these prescriptive burns as well, so.
Council Peckham.
First of all, very interesting tonight, topic. I know formula grace was on the water all the time, all the time, I think that's all he'd done. But when I seen water quality, when this come down to me, I think you'd be kidding me. What is seems to be the problem? Is there a problem? In talking to Mr. Pearson about the trees, he was worried about the trees and the vegetation that if he didn't pick it up, it could actually spoil the water. You know, I took a tour with him and it should chew all the streets and all that stuff. It was, it was very interesting. And the thing come in my mind, do you have hydrants up there? You don't have hydrants. Evidently, you said, they call them fire ponds, is that what they call them?
Fire suppression ponds.
Suppression ponds, yeah, see, I didn't know that. But, you know, you learn as you go on. So how many of these ponds do you have there?
So, well, so the first, maybe half a dozen, were built like a hundred years ago. And they look like swimming pools, they're, they're ten foot deep, they're, you know, roughly, I don't know, twenty, twenty-five feet by ten feet. And then the CCC came in, they did this, a similar thing, that's the Civilian Conservation Corps, that was a federal program in the nineteen thirties. And they built another half dozen. So, so on our, you know, in our immediate Watapa reservation, we probably have eight or ten. Some are in remote places, some are right off of Indian Town Road, Blossom Road, and then the state has another couple of dozen. And, you know, we're, we're a maybe third, this bio reserve is up to sixteen thousand acres now, so it's so spread out. So our footprint maybe is a third of that. So, you know, so we're well stocked with these fire ponds. And then the state as well, on the DCR lands, have another probably dozen, dozen and a half fire ponds. And they're all numbered and they're on, they have a sort of, you know, like a master map so that they're easy to find if, when they're needed.
So when you do have a fire, the trucks will come in, use all pumpers then? You don't need hook and ladders, right? They could go through there anyway. But everything comes down to pumping the water out. And now the tower, I was wondering about the tower. Now that's man didn't win, it starts with April, you said?
Yeah, often people don't realize that the, the highest fire danger is in early April when, you know, we're out of the winter. The leaves that have died, you know, that fell in the fall, they've been sort of drying. And then there's no foliage on the tree, so the sun is just bearing down on the leaf litter and it gets really crunchy. And it gets, you know, that's, that's the time where, you know, you know, careless human or, you know, even a lightning strike. In fact, the fire that went up to Timber Lane a couple of years ago, that was a lightning strike, fire.
So how late in the season do they stay up there?
They'll stay till roughly Labor Day.
Labor Day?
It depends on really, you know, what kind of a season, this has been a wet season, so, you know, it could be maybe, you know, they're going to play it by ear.
Yeah, you, you got enough houses up there, people live, if there's something going on, they would notice it as well?
Yeah, the, the fire that happened two years ago burnt for two days and then residents smelled it.
Okay.
Yeah. So they play a big part in helping to protect as well.
Well, you know, like I said, it's very educational here. I'm always hopping on the water pipes that certainly gives you a better quality going through the new pipes rather than the rusty old pipes. But see, we're getting there. And the other idea that whoever had to put another pump down there was genius. We got one pump, we got two pumps now, right? Pumping the water.
From the?
From the, where you.
The water treatment plant?
Yeah.
Yes, so we had one or two pumps down and, yeah, we've, we've repaired all the ones that were down.
Yeah.
Yep.
So other than that, you know, I'm happy to know that I think we're a lot safer than California and Washington and them places. I mean, they get started, they can't stop them.
No, they can't.
And I guess they're much, much larger than us for sure. But again, we're a little bit compact, maybe we can do it better because we're not as big as them. But I certainly would not like to see.
Train is different as well.
What is it?
Well, they're very mountainous in the wild.
Yeah, yeah.
You know, very difficult to do, whereas we're mostly flat.
Flat, yeah, it's good advantage.
Weather wise, they get a lot of high pressure systems too, which is a lot drier. We get a lot of low pressure systems here, we get a lot more moisture that's brought down to us.
I'm happy you guys are here to talk about this, but like I said, when I seen this, wow, I thought we had good water. We do have good water. There's no problem with the water, you know, it's just painful to water, that's what they don't like.
When it comes, when it comes to that, if, if somebody asked me what my two biggest concerns were with water quality right now is having licensed operators down at a water treatment plant. We've been down operators and we're going back down some operators recently. So that is going to become an issue for us, staffing problems down at our treatment plant. The other thing is properly funding our budget. That's always a yearly issue that we have. You know, this year we still don't have rates that support our budget, so that's my second largest concern.
Very interesting, why are we losing two guys that are very important? How many guys that run this, the water, everything? The engineers, special licenses?
Yep.
So why do we lose them?
So to be a water treatment operator in the city of Fall River at the treatment plant, you have to have a minimum of a T three license from the state of Massachusetts. We have to have an operator, the plant twenty-four hours a day, seven days a week. Whenever that plant is running, there needs to be a licensed operator at the plant. Why are we losing our operators? One, our pay scales are a lot lower than surrounding communities and, and morale within the employees, I think it's down. You know, the continued, continued budget battles and everything else that goes on doesn't, doesn't help the morale of our employees. I can tell you that much.
How many years of service that individuals have with you, the two that are leaving?
So one of them was a new hire that we just brought in recently and he's, he's leaving for, for somewhere else. I believe, I, I haven't heard exactly where he's leaving for. The other employee that we're leaving, he's been with us, I believe, about fifteen years.
Fifteen years.
Yeah, and he's leaving for another local community that's paying him a lot more than, than we do.
How tough do you think it will be for you to find somebody with fifteen years' experience?
It would be extremely tough to find somebody with fifteen years' experience that would be willing to come work for the city. I would hope that we can find a licensed operator sometime in the near future. I wanted to have Jody Repose, our Director of Water Treatment here tonight as well, but she couldn't come because she actually has to operate the plant tonight, so.
All right, I know it's a tough situation and it's all about money again. I mean, you haven't got the money to pay these guys to go someplace else. You lose a guy with fifteen years and there's only so many guys that got these permits and you let them slide out.
Yeah.
And there's nothing really we can do unless, and then if you give it to one, this guy in the back and the other guy in the back, they want the same thing. They get five or ten thousand dollars, you know, they want it, so what are you going to do?
But, so you got to understand with, with drinking water operators, they're licensed professionals with, with the state. So, you know, it's the same as, you know, firefighters have to have certain credentials, police have to have certain credentials. You know, you can't just take anybody and put them as a licensed water treatment operator to operate our plant. You have to have that license, you have to have the credentials to be able to operate our plant. So it can't just be anybody, they're licensed professionals. So it's, you know, there, there is a premium that's typically paid for somebody that has a license and is able to do a particular task like that.
Is there alarming to you that you're losing two?
Very.
And how would, how could it affect the city negative?
So again, you know, I can tell you that my, the Director of the Plant is operating tonight and our assistant manager will be operating as well coming up in the near future. So we're going to have trouble covering shifts coming up in the near future. So there's a total of four, four operator shifts. We had, up to this point, we had three of them filled, we still had one open shift. We're working with the current staff member to get her fully licensed to put her onto the third shift. So then we were going to be, have the four licensed operators. With losing two, we're down to one operator position to cover four shifts.
No, I believe by saying that it's a dangerous situation, it's critical.
Yes.
And I think all our colleagues should be looking into this to make sure that we have the right help there as soon as we can. But the biggest thing is, like you say, who's going to come down? It's got to be more money, it can't be the same rate everybody else is paying big money. And I guess I don't blame them, you know, fifteen years and you lose a guy. But they should have been saying, say, maybe we can help you out here, I don't know. Maybe the administration was stuck in, maybe just a little more, I don't know.
But, you know, and again, it's very tough to, to potentially say that we may increase one pay, one, you know, group of people. And then potentially say that we're going to lay off others because we don't have the rates to support the whole entire department is, is a tough. You know, how, how do you say, well, we're paying these guys more, but we're going to lay these guys off?
At least what we're doing here tonight is letting the people of Fall River know that is, is crucial. Something should be done, it's got to be done and we should step up and see what we can do because that's what it is. And with that, I said enough, I yield, thank you.
It's the only way to address this issue is to raise, raise water rates, right?
To, yes, to, you know, the budget that was submitted for FY twenty-two currently, the rates that were submitted was, was not, was not approved yet. So I, I currently have a, a budget, a budget that doesn't, that isn't supported by my rates.
Okay.
The question I had was, were there progressive increases to the salaries of these gentlemen? The question I had was, were there progressive increases to the salaries of these gentlemen that left in this last budget? Because you had said that the, uh, morale between the employees, I would find that to be more of a, a, a union administration issue than a city council issue.
Uh, so the, these, uh, members are part of a collective bargaining, uh, group, uh, which is ASME. I think, uh, you know, everybody's familiar with the ASME Union, there's a, uh, there's a number of different members, uh, you have, um, you know, a lot of city hall employees are part of the ASME Union, um, I think, believe, police dispatches and water department or employees. I think parks or, or cemeteries may still be part of ASME as well, so it's an interesting bargaining group, um, you know. So, again, it's, it's, it, it is something that's been kind of discussed, but the problem is, the problem that I'm stuck with right now, how do I say that I'm gonna try to adjust these guys and lay off these guys?
Well, the, the, the question I, I have is though, was there, was there increases to, so we just lost two gentlemen, one with fifteen years and one, one new hire. Was there increases to their salary proposed in the budget?
Uh, there is other personnel costs that are in the FY twenty-two budget.
So not specifically their job title just up, the other personnel cost line item?
Yep.
I just wanted to clarify, just because the morale.
Which was a huge sticking point when.
Uh, we did talk about that a lot, was that, what was that money gonna be used for? It would have been great and if maybe if it would have come up that I need to keep this fifteen year employee, then we could have discussed it then. Unfortunately, that's not what happened. Um, and again, the, the salaries, the contracts, they, they come down to us after they're approved upstairs. So whatever the salary should be, should be discussed between the union and the administration and then send it down to us. If there's more money in there and we're losing people because we can't afford them and we have nobody to operate the water plant, I think that's a serious issue and it needs to be addressed.
And, and I, I, you still have the floor, but I, I just need to add that in this specific situation, the other personnel costs line item in the budget could not have only been applied in this situation because the rates were in ordinance, the, the rate increases were in ordinance, right?
So, so these rates are by collective bargaining agreement so that those are separate from the.
What I mean is the water rates, the water rates that you're talking about that we, that you said that we need to increase.
Yep.
Those were in ordinance and were not bought a part of the budget, but that budget was still passed with the other personnel costs after the forty-five day rule. So the, the other personnel cost is still in that budget. It's the water rates that we didn't increase because they were still in ordinance when the budget got pushed through.
Yeah, correct, exactly. So you.
Sorry, Chris.
And you gotta look at my budget and I think a little bit off topic from the original resolution, but, um, you know, I think you talk about, uh, you know, water and sewers a little bit different than the general budget because my rates, uh, our rates need to be approved by ordinance as well. So we build the budget to, to a specific, you know, we build the budget and then we figure out what the rate should be for that year. Uh, if there's a change in the rates, those need to go to ordinance. So yes, you have two separate things, uh, with my budget. Unlike the general fund budget where, um, you know, the governing body doesn't have any, uh, you know, jurisdiction over, over the revenues per se. You know, I, I'm not a, I'm not a financial expert on all tha- on all that stuff, but I know, um, my rates were in ordinance, um, they were sent out of ordinance. There are new rates that are in ordinance currently, um, and again.
But those other personnel ca- that other personnel cost line item that you mentioned before.
Yeah.
That did get pushed through.
That, that is within the budget, again, but I have an unfunded budget right now.
Okay.
And, you know, how can I, again, you know?
That line item is pushed through, but it's not able to be funded because of the rates.
Yeah, I, I understand. I, I was just trying, just for, uh, for clarity.
Yep.
Uh, when, when the morale issue was brought up, that there are several pieces to this, the council being the ending of that. It starts at the top, comes down, works its way to the council and we approve it and deny. Um, we all know what happened, we don't have to get into it. Um, it's just a shame that you didn't lose too mu- are you, let me ask this question, are you anticipating losing anybody else?
Um, you know, possibly, I'm not sure, you know, um.
Well, I'm, I'm asking because it is, as Council Pelletier said, it is, it's a serious, uh, department, a very serious department within the city. If you. I think this needs to be addressed upstairs, uh, with what you wanna do with your personnel, because that's not my place by any means. But I, I do appreciate the clarification on everything. With that, I yield.
Please, go ahead.
We do run a little differently because we are an enterprise fund. The enterprise fund is set up in state law. I wrote the enterprise fund, I wrote the ordinances and the rates to support it. That was back along with city administrator Alan Silva. That goes back a while. The enterprise funds really should be, if you were to ask my opinion, the enterprise fund should be dealt with completely separately than the general budget. Unfortunately, they get lumped in. There's actually a different timeline for your enterprise fund. We usually march the first, thirty days later, it, that's when the enterprise fund should be discussed. It has been difficult since its inception. This is nothing new, unfortunately, or fortunately, it's just nothing new. It's not the council's fault, it's neither, it's just the way it has come down to be. And as representatives of an enterprise fund, we feel that we should be dealt with separately. And for that, I would like to thank you, thank the counselors for attending this meeting because I firmly believe that open communication between the water board, between the water department administrators and this important subcommittee is vital.
Yeah.
And we stand ready at any time to come down, give you the facts as they are and just take it from there. We've always approached things with this one caveat. How does this make the water quality better? That's, that's how we decide everything. And the other thing is, is the counselor pointed out, we feel that we are the most important department and building in the city because without water, you have no life. And it really comes down to that. We are QuikWashan, falling water. We've been that way since eighteen seventy-three.
Yeah, it's, uh, it's interesting, say the least, because every single department can talk about their vital components. You know, how much of a city would we have if public safety wasn't funded properly? How much of a future would we have if education wasn't funded properly? We have so much going on back and forth and, and then we have taxpayers that directly talk to us every time there's a fee about to be raised or, or a rate about to be increased. So, and, and you already know where I am on it and, and I wish I had the, the magic wand that could make everyone happy, but it's just not gonna happen, you know?
So do I.
On that rate, um, we thank you all for coming down to the table, uh, to this meeting. Uh, is there anything anyone would like to add more?
So if you give me just one more minute, I know everybody wants to get out of here. Bio reserve.
Go ahead.
Bio reserve map, uh, over here, as Mike mentioned earlier, we have over sixteen thousand acres, um, between Fall River Reservation, uh, Dartmouth land, Freetown land, uh, open to the public. Uh, it has hiking trails, walking trails, uh, in the Freetown State Forest. There's some mo- motorized bike trail areas, uh, there's pedal bike trail areas throughout the whole entire area. Maps are available from Mike LaBosia, available here at City Hall, but, uh, it's a great spot for people to be able to get out, uh, and, uh, explore nature.
Thank you very much for that. Yes, sir.
Um, I have, if you sort of were interested in.
Give it to me.
And I, I thought I would.
Yep. We're gonna have it too, give it to Carla and she'll make a copy of it. Yep, she'll make copies of it. Thank you so much.
Excellent, thank you guys.
Okay, guys, thanks a lot for coming by.
Have a good evening.
Thank you as well. Uh, motion to adjourn.
Motion's open.
Motion made.
Second.
Second, everybody, Council Pelletier, all in favor?
Aye.